Of adjustment. One, two, three, I guess. First thing is roll call. Barb, you don't do roll call?
Commissioner Pika.
Here.
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Hentges.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Vanoff.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is introductions. Up front here, we have Brad Davis, our planning manager with us, and Barb Simonson, our deputy clerk. On the audience, I see Marty Schmidt, Arizona Administrator, Greg Wagner, our principal planner, Nathan Hall, our associate planner, and also see our county commissioner, Tom Wolf. How's it going, Tom? Okay. After that, next thing on the agenda is approval of the May ninth, two thousand twenty-two meeting minutes. Everybody on the board has a chance to review the minutes, any changes or deletions to the minutes? If not, to have a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion, second to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In favor, minutes have been approved. Okay, the first item on our variance agenda is PL number twenty, twenty-two dash zero three seven, request for variance from a required fifty-foot bluff setback to ten feet to replace a non-compliant septic system. Michael Durma, applicant, property owner in section three of Sand Creek Township. And Greg, you want to provide the report on this?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, commissioners, on the screen is the site location map of the subject property in section three of Sand Creek Township, as you indicated. Property, again, is one-six, one-nine-zero, Overlook Drive. And the request is to, request is for variance from the fifty-foot bluff setback, a forty-foot variance to locate septic tanks ten feet from the top of the bluff. The Durma home, well, site location map, sorry, I'll point out. So, the subject property is outlined in red, so this is just north of Bluff Drive on Overlook Drive and just to the east of Highway one sixty-nine. The Durma home was originally built back in the nineteen-seventies, nineteen seventy-eight, nineteen seventy-nine, back prior to when county ordinances had bluff setback standards. So, the existing septic system was installed around that time, so generally just over forty years old. The Durma family had a compliance inspection done in October of two thousand twenty-one, and it was identified that the system was failing. Under the requirements for a non-compliant septic system, depending on why it's failing, county ordinance provides ten months to ten years, depending on the level of non-compliance. In this case, the non-compliance was likely for a cesspool, which is generally a minor reason for replacement. And so, they get the maximum of ten years to replace, so that it was put on schedule to be replaced by two thousand thirty-one. However, the applicant has indicated possibly selling the home and therefore looking to replace the system prior to doing so. Here's an overhead aerial of the home. The bluff is wooded, so we can't really see the topography, but the home is located right here, right off the edge of the cul-de-sac. The site begins to slope, and actually, maybe I can flip to that. Sorry, go on. Here we go. There you go. All right, so here's the existing home, and you can see these are two-foot contours. So, you can see that the site basically slopes from where the home is located and up by the road, all the way down to the bottom of the bluff, right here. So, it's a gradual slope. We don't see any real evidence on this property of active erosion. And the home has been in place for forty-plus years, and is actually right kind of on top of the bluff. The, the Durma family owns this property, which is five acres. To the south, they have another two-and-a-half acre lot, and they actually own this additional two-and-a-half acre lot. But the variance will be on the two that are outlined here in red. So, as I flip to the site plan, this would be the new proposed septic layout. Just so you know, the existing system, the bluff line is the dashed line here that runs north-south, right behind the home. This little circle here and the line, that's the existing septic system coming out of the home. So, the existing tanks in cesspool are basically right on the top of the bluff line. What's being proposed tonight is to remove those and then put new tanks using the same connection from the home. The new tanks there would be ten feet from the top of the bluff, so basically ten feet further back. There would be two tanks here, and they would be fourteen feet from the road right-of-way. The setback from the road right-of-way is ten feet, or excuse me, the property and not road right-of-way. So, that would be piped out and then bored under the existing driveway. And the new drain field would actually be on that two-and-a-half acres that I had outlined in red, the property to the south. So, this would be the new drain field, and that drain field would meet the fifty-foot bluff setback. So, county staff was very supportive of the replacement, noting that the drain field would actually meet the fifty-foot setback. A couple of the reasons that the county is supporting the variance. The existing system is up here, doesn't meet the setback to the bluff, may actually be in the bluff. We've looked at possibly replacing here to the south, or right immediately south of the home. But these lines here indicates electrical, internet, and that's where the util, and gas, that's where the utilities kind of enter the home. And the existing well is located right here. Septic systems need to be fifty feet from a well. So, the location down on this other lot meets the bluff setback, meets the well setback. It meets the ten-foot setback to the road right-of-way. So, we were, they were able to fit a system where the drain field meets the required setbacks. We're just dealing with the variance essentially from the tanks. But again, the new proposed location would be ten feet better than what is there now. So, in the staff report, we identified the criteria for supporting the bluff. The one other thing, working with the applicant, he will be combining these. We've sent him information from our county tax department on putting the two properties together as one parcel. So, then we don't have to deal with having to grant himself an easement because the drain field is on a lot separate from the home. So, he has the septic installer kind of lined up to go in the next couple of weeks here, so we'll be making sure that that combination occurs, you know, with the septic. The township did hear this, there was the memo from Environmental Services. I just kind of wanted to highlight that, that was in your packet, where they kind of outlined their support variance. And then, last week, township, Sand Creek, did recommend approval of the request. And Chad Searcy from the township is here, if you have any questions with him. Otherwise, the applicant is here, or I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Greg. Any questions from this board?
So, I'm, I like the idea that there was a lot of work done on this, but are you really saying that the applicant and you and staff, that there wasn't any way that you could come up with something that met the whole thing, meeting the setback? In other words, you, you looked at this and you looked at that, but this was actually the best that you could come with, up with on the site, with the drainage fields meeting the setback? Is that, am I right about that?
Yep. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Robbins, the applicant could probably weigh in because he's worked with a couple of septic companies on trying to look at some options here. I mean, we initially, I think, maybe looked at, well, what can they do north of the home? But the space is very limited as the property line kind of angles in there. The other option was to potentially bring the tanks down out the south side. There is the consideration of added expense because the, the current line comes out the house on the north side. So, they'd have to do a lot of replumbing of the home to make that work. But the main reason that the tanks can't go south of the home is that the well is right here. And as I said, they have to be fifty feet, so the, the tanks just would not fit and meet the fifty-foot well setback and the bluff setback on the south side of the house.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, does this have much impact on trees? Do they have to remove trees, or?
No. Yeah, it's hard to, well, maybe if I flip back over to the aerial. So, the, the new drain field will kind of go up in this area here, which is pretty much cleared out. So, it, it doesn't disturb any trees that are in the bluff or top of bluff. So, it's, it's kind of the natural location. And then, where the, where the tank is going on the north side is, is kind of the yard. So, it's not, as the applicant kind of just alluded to, it's not really removing any trees either.
And my second question is, there's a little shed there. Does that have any impact on anything?
No. The, the drain field will be to the south of the shed.
If you want the applicant to come to the podium?
I, I can point out, so the shed's here, so it'll, it'll kind of be to the southeast of the shed, so it won't impact that. Or south of the shed, I'm sorry, the shed's right there, so.
Any other questions from the board? Public hearing, anybody like to address the board regarding this variance? Not, I have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion, second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And what are your wishes on this variance?
Mr. Chairman, based on the criteria for variance consideration, I recommend approval of the requested forty-foot variance to reduce. The fifty-foot bluff setback to ten feet to a septic tank, recognizing that Sand Creek Township has approved.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion, second to approve the variance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unfavored? Okay, the variance has been approved. Thank you, Greg. Next item is PL number twenty, twenty-two dash zero four one, request for variance from the required six-hundred-foot lot width in the A-one zoning district, seventy-five feet to modify the lot line between two legal, non-conforming lots, Lance and Deborah Kuzmark, applicant and property owner in section seven, Helena Township. And Marty, you want to address the board on this?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, on the screen, you can see the site location map for the applicant's two parcels here, outlined in red. The parcels are located in section seven of Helena Township. Parcels lie just to the west of Delmar Avenue, our County Road eleven here, and just to the south of where County Road sixty-four, two-hundred-and-thirtieth Street, tie in with the east side of Delmar Avenue in this location here. Surrounding properties are typically large lot agricultural properties. The predominant land use or zoning in this area is A-one, which is our egg preservation district, and that district has a minimum lot size of forty acres. The applicant's parcels are five-point-eight acres for the southern lot and six-point-eight acres for the northern lot, significantly less than are required. But these lots are legal non-conforming because they were created prior to zoning coming into effect in this area, which essentially means they can be developed as long as they can find a house and septic site that meet setback requirements. And I'll go to the aerial photo. Here's an aerial photo of the property. The parcels are wooded from, from end to end. The applicant's home is located here on the southern lot with access out to Delmar Avenue. His septic system, however, is located on the east end of the northern lot, in this area here. In addition, in two thousand five, the county did a study and identified to extend County Road sixty-four approximately one mile to the west along the applicant's northern boundary to tie in with another segment of County Road sixty-four. This will be a future arterial road, meaning dedication of approximately seventy-five feet of right-of-way along the applicant's northern, northern parcel. This parcel is only about two-hundred-and-thirty feet wide, so this future roads have significant impact on the future development of this northern property. So, in order to solve a few issues here, the applicants are proposing to, rather than split this, these two parcels, north and south, split them east and west so that the house and septic system could be on the same lot, and then the west lot would have more opportunity to be developed in, in a fashion further from that future county road. We've got a couple site plans here, but I like this one a little bit better because it shows it a little bit better. Here's Delmar Avenue on the east side of the property. The way they're proposing to subdivide it is to create an east lot essentially identified by the black crosshatch here. On this parcel would be the applicant's house, the garage, and the septic site. And the west lot would be created over here in the green crosshatch. The west lot would include a seventy-five-foot strip that runs across the northern boundary of the parcel out to Delmar Avenue. Within this seventy-five-foot strip, the applicant would dedicate to the county seventy-five feet of road right-of-way in an easement for future construction of County Road sixty-four. The west lot would be accessed via a driveway in the seventy-five-foot strip until County Road sixty-four is built. Once County Road sixty-four is built, that driveway would connect to that future county road. Staff is supportive of this variance request for, for a number of reasons. One, it gets the applicant's house and septic on the same parcel. Two, it provides more opportunity for this western property to be developed in the future. Three, it provides right-of-way for a future county road to be constructed in the area. And four, because when that county road is constructed, both the east lot and the west lot will meet our lot with requirement because it will have much more frontage on a publicly maintained road. In addition to the county, the township did recommend approval of the variance request at their meeting on May fifth. The applicant is here, and I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Marty. Any questions from the board here?
Yeah, Chair, I'm assuming there's not going to be a grade change in sixty-four when it goes over or nothing significant or anything, I'm assuming?
Well, obviously, we'll have to tie in with the existing ends of sixty-four. I, I don't, we haven't gotten to that level of design work on future sixty-four here. Commissioner Pika, so I can't, I can't answer that question exactly, but I, I don't assume any big grade change.
Thank you.
Any other questions? It's a public hearing. Anybody like to address the board regarding this variance? If not, you have a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
What?
Motion?
Okay. I have a motion, second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In favor? Okay. And what are your wishes on this variance, please?
Mr. Chairman, based on the eight hardship criteria for granting a variance, I recommend approval of the requested variance, PL two oh two one dash oh two oh one for the Kuzmarks, noting that the township of Helena has recommended approval.
Second.
I have a motion, second to approve the variance. All in favor, say aye.
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 That's a little bit slow.
I guess the variance has been approved. Any other, Brad, any other issues for the board?
Nope.
I have a motion to close the Board of Adjustment. Motion?
Second.
A motion, second to close the Board of Adjustment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Turn it over to Planning now.
Good evening, and I call to order the Scott County Planning Advisory Commission meeting for July eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. And we'll start with our roll call and introductions. Commissioner Hentges.
Here.
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Huber.
Here.
Commissioner Pika.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Vanhoff, here. Also present is Brad Davis at the annual podium, our planning manager. Next to him is Barb Simonson, deputy clerk to the board. I know that Greg Wagner, our principal planner, is here at the podium as well. Marty Schmidt, our zoning administrator, is out in the hallway right now, but is in attendance. And Nathan Hall, our associate planner, is also here, as well as Tom Wolf, our county commissioner, is here as well with us this evening. We're going now to our approval of our May ninth Planning Advisory Commission meeting minutes. The commissioners have all been sent a copy of the minutes and opportunity to review them. Are there any conditions, are there any additions or deletions or corrections to the minutes as painted? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the May ninth Planning and Advisory Commission meeting minutes.
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hentges, second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I call for a vote. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. We have one item on our consent agenda this evening. All items listed are considered, on the consent agenda are considered by the Planning Commission to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a Planning Commission board member or a member of the public so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately. Anyone like to have any of these items, this one item, removed from the consent agenda? I will read it first, and if you wish to have it removed, let me know. It's number twenty, twenty-two dash zero three four, it's a request to approve the preliminary plat and final plat of Panama Acres, consisted of two lots on twenty acres. Douglas De Schiefer, the applicant and property owner, in section thirty-five of Cedar Lake Township. Anyone like to have that removed, Planning Commission? Okay, this item will be approved with the approval of this consent agenda. This time, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, we approve the consent agenda as written.
I have a motion by Commissioner Huber. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
By Commissioner Robbins. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. That item has been approved. The consent agenda is approved. Thank you. At this time, I'll go to our public hearing. And this is number twenty, twenty-one dash zero four four, request for a one-year review of the interim use permit for Gretz Discovery Days Farm Camp. David and Angela Gretz are the applicants and the property owners, and it's in section thirty-five of Cedar Lake Township. And Nathan Hall, our associate planner, will be making the staff report. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Good evening, commissioners. David and Angela Gretz, before this board one year ago, and they received an interim use permit to operate a private day park as a farm camp. They were here in June of two thousand twenty-one and received approval on July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one from the county board. The farm camp has been operated from their eight-point-three-one-acre property in southeastern Newmarket Township, a location where the applicants also reside. Under the county, in two thousand twenty-one, the Gretzes proposed this farm camp for children that would operate Monday through Friday during ten weeks of the summer, include one-day camps on Saturdays. The applicant stated in their narrative that the camp would have up to thirty children at once, with campers split into groups of ten based on age. They proposed that the camp would have a number of activities that utilize their property, the pool, the playground, the workshop, and farmyard. And the activities would be supervised by a staff of up to eight people, including the applicants themselves. The applicant is here tonight to discuss how the camp has operated over the past year and how it is currently operating. And the applicant has noted the camp has not been running at full capacity in the first season. Condition eleven of the Gretz is IUP, requires the item to be reviewed one year after approval. This commission is not required to make any formal motion regarding this item, rather it's an opportunity to, to hear about how the camp is operating and make any, provide any feedback that you may find appropriate and would like the applicant to, to hear. Scott County staff has not received any complaints regarding this item or the operation of the camp, and Newmarket Township has noted they have no complaints either. Mr. Chair, the applicant is here. If you would like to hear from the applicant, otherwise, I'll, I'll stand by.
Sure, I think we'd probably like to hear from the applicant and their experience, so. You'd like to come on up here, David, and start your comments with your name, and so we have that in the record as well. Thank you.
All right, good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. I am Dave Gretz. I am the president and owner-operator of Discovery Days Farm Camp. The location, we've already discussed, and it's my pleasure to be able to be here and be able to provide you an update on what we've been doing, what we did last year, and what our plans are this year. It's, I'm super excited about it, and we've gotten a lot of great feedback, a lot of excited kids. And I'm, I'm coming from the first day of our second week this, this summer, and it's just, it's just a blast. All right, so, what I'm going to basically look at is, or cover, and I think you guys might have a copy of the charts there, is just kind of, let's look back at two thousand twenty-one. What we did based on the, you know, the specifics that Nathan just shared that were in the IUP, and then look at what our plans are and what we're doing and the status of, of things this year. So, two thousand twenty-one in review, it was a huge success, not necessarily financially, as you might expect, I guess, for a startup of any kind. But, yeah, we, we definitely lost some money, but our hearts were full. From the perspective of, you know, camper satisfaction, fulfillment of our mission and goals of, of meeting camper needs and be able to teach them and help them learn and grow outside and appreciate the outdoors, it was a raging success. We had kids coming, you know, came for a day or two, they came for a week, and they were begging their parents on their way home to send them back the next week. And we actually did have, and I'll get to it here, we had multiple kids come back multiple weeks last year. I mean, we had some came up almost all summer, like they had nothing better to do. This year, it was so funny, I had multiple, I had two or three parents tell me that their kids haven't stopped talking about farm camps since they left last summer. So, they've been just enjoying it, they love it. It was a big learning experience, as you might expect on our part, though. Obviously, learning curve, we'd never done anything like this before. As, as mentioned, we were planning on, you know, ten staff, up to thirty campers. What we found out was even if, when we had ten or fewer campers, you know, we still really needed almost six staff members just to make sure everything flowed efficiently and effectively. So, we quickly learned that, and I made sure we had the right people there. And when we did, it was just, you know, it, it worked really well. Looking at the numbers, we were authorized up to ten five-day camps. We, after we got approved, I, I, sorry, the permit was approved, we, we ran six camps, five days each. Two of the camps ultimately kind of overlapped a little bit, based on the day that we actually received. It was like on a Tuesday or Wednesday, so we finished that week, bled into the following week, and, and we had some overlap there. But we ended up with six separate camps for five days. As also mentioned, we were authorized up to six single-day camps on Saturdays. So, we didn't hold any camps on Saturdays last year, but we had a lot of parents asking, begging, to be able to come for just a day or two days. Part of it was one, they were new, and they had like, what is this farm camp thing that you guys are doing? Can we just try it for a day? And the other one was, you know, by the time we got going, everybody was in camps, right? So, they might only have one or two days that they could do it. So, so we opened it up, gave them the opportunity to just come for a day or two or three. So, that's kind of how we, we ended up using that. But so, really, we had just the six-week-long camps. And the way that worked was, our curriculum, our plans, are based on a five-day week. And those people who then just came for a day or two days, they just jumped into the group and participated in everything that we were doing. What that meant was, they didn't necessarily get to do everything we do within a week, but they got to enjoy everything we did that day. And then we tried to cater to what they wanted to do. So, here I got the, the dates listed that we ran. Again, we're authorized up to thirty campers per week. But last year, obviously, was, was real slow, as I mentioned. The numbers next to the dates there are the number of campers that we had that week. However, that doesn't mean we had that many for the full week. So, those numbers, like, you know, the twelve, nineteen, seventeen, those include kids who just came for one day or two days. The most campers we ever had on any single day was fourteen, and I think that happened maybe twice. And so, I just added more, a few more staff members to make sure we could cover everybody. So, we didn't, we didn't break up into multiple groups as we had proposed when we only had twelve or thirteen or fourteen kids, because we could manage them all together. The attendee demographics, we reached quite a, quite a few people. We had fifty-nine total individual campers in those numbers. Like I said, some attended multiple weeks. We had six campers came for three weeks of our six camps. So, it came to half of our camps last year. And we had three other ones who came to, to two weeks. Between, splitting between boys and girls, it was pretty even, thirty-one girls, twenty-eight boys. So, I was really satisfied with that. We had, you know, everybody was, we were reaching multiple, you know, a lot of people. So I was really satisfied with that. We had, you know, everybody was, we were reaching multiple, you know, a lot of people. So I was really happy to see that it wasn't like slanted one way or the other. The age range was five to twelve years old. The median age was seven, but the biggest group of campers last year was six-year-olds. So if you think about, you know, where, between that five and twelve, most of our campers were on the younger end of that range, which really worked out really well, and let them all work together closer. The attendees primarily were from the South Metro, Elko, Lakeville, and Apple Valley were probably the biggest attendees. We had a few from Northfield, and there's probably some, I think, Hastings, maybe, actually some from Hastings. And actually, this year, I got a typo there. So we hired four, we actually hired five of our campers from last year for this year's staff. So it was really cool.
How old were those campers?
What's that?
How old were those campers?
The ones we just hired?
Yes.
They were eleven, yeah, they were eleven last year. So what was, so this year's camp, actually, I didn't put that in the chair, this year's camp, we backed off the ages from five to eleven years. And so I started hiring at twelve years old.
Okay.
So our camp staff is twelve years old and older, so we had a few eleven-years-old. Eleven-year-olds last year that I just recognized as people that I thought I might like to reach out to, to join us, and they accepted, and so five of them were on our staff.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but what, what kind of duties does a twelve-year-old do as a staff person?
That's a great question. I'll get to it in a minute, but let me answer your question right now, because we have our, our staff is dividing up into three different age groups. So twelve-to-fourteen-year-olds are camper, are camp junior counselors. And they primarily are the ones that are interacting a lot with the kids, with the campers, kind of being like buddies. Right? They're the ones that, you know, when somebody looks like they're lonely, or they're going off on their own, it's these counselors are the ones that are going to kind of go sit with them, help them out, talk about, because they can relate the most closely with them. There are also a lot of go-tos, they're logistics. So if somebody has to go potty, you send one of the counselors with the kid to go over to the potty so that they can go do that. You need something from the barn, you send one of the counselors to go run errands. So those are the main duties they're doing. They're interacting a lot with the kids because they can relate, and they're the ones running a lot of the errands. And I'll get to the rest of the other ones in just a minute. So it's not really big, heavy lifting. It's, they're, they're just being kids in some ways. All right, so, well, do you have any, I'm kind of paused here. Do you guys have any other questions about twenty twenty-one? And how?
I guess I, I don't remember the public hearing in June of twenty twenty-one, and the questions and concerns of the citizens, and I don't know if our staff looked at that. You know, I thought dropping them off was maybe an issue with some people. I don't remember too much of the comment.
Yeah.
But if we could remember that, and if that was addressed, and
Okay, so let me, so I think I can address that mostly, maybe Nathan can back me up, too. I don't remember, recall any public concerns. We talked to our neighbors and stuff about it, and they were all for it. But it, but it was the township, one of their conditions was about the parking and how drop-off and pickup was going to operate. And their concern was us having people, you know, parking along, well, basically in the ditch, you know, off on the, off on the side of the road into the ditch, and the concern, I think, is erosion and conditions like that. The other concern would be dust, and that would be from our neighbors, but we, we owned up to that and said we could take care of it. So how did that work last year? Admittedly, it did not work as good as I planned. Because no matter how many times you tell parents, just stay in line, and I will get your kid out of the car and send them on their way, if you need to talk to me, pull in the driveway and then we'll talk. They were coming faster than, you know, even with eight to ten kids, they were coming faster than, than I could handle them. They're all jumping out of their cars, running up to the registration. So I would talk to them, and, and, you know, for the week, it would be a little bit better. And so, so it didn't work as good as I planned, because I thought my emails and communications with the parents were very clear about that, but it, it took some little extra talking. But we didn't have any problems with, you know, erosion or anything. This year, so far, it's a little bit better, but I'm still having some of the same problems, and I think it's just a learning curve with a lot of the parents, they're just, maybe don't read the emails as closely as, as I write them. And so it's just me having to talk with the parents, say, hey, we, we can't park on the side of the road. Can you just stay on, stay to the side, and we'll get your kids as we go? That was the only main, that was the main concern, condition. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, just clarify for me, I think I know. Do the kids come and stay over?
No, they do not. It's just a day
This is a day camp?
Day camp, yep.
So if you say a kid stayed, went three weeks, he comes on Monday, goes home on Monday, comes back on Tuesday, is that right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, camp operates nine AM to four PM.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, any other questions on twenty twenty-one?
I just have a comment on, I was down there today on your street and came around, and the street's a dead-end street with a cul-de-sac that comes around, so it's, the cars don't have to back up, they can go around the cul-de-sac
Yeah.
come out the other side, so it, it, there's two factors that are carrying out there. St. Ponte's a dead-end street, number one, so you're not having a lot of additional traffic other than the other houses on the, on the street. The second thing is they're not having to back to turn around, they just go around and, and, and take the cul-de-sac around. Is that
Correct.
accurate?
Yes. Yep, that's what I tell them to do. Every once in a while, I'll get one that just doesn't listen, and they back, I'm like, I'm, okay, never mind, I'll talk to you tomorrow. Or tonight, when you, you know, drop them off. But yes, most of them, yep, they just keep going around the cul-de-sac and back out, and like, that is like the best flow control, I think.
Right.
So smooth. All right, so for twenty twenty-two, we have a Facebook business page we started up, trying to formalize a little bit, providing information and access to the registration page. We've got lots of pictures and videos, too, if you want to check it out. We did more advertising this year, trying to get the word out, trying to, you know, buoy up our numbers, obviously. We advertised through Facebook and through Friends for youth that were interested in staff positions, and we had a huge response. I'll get to a minute, you know, what our staff looks like now. We had a huge response of, you know, mostly youth, teenagers, twelve to, twelve to seventeen years old, who really were looking for that opportunity. So I held some information meetings to make sure they all understood what the responsibilities were going to be. And then we provided some training, a couple of training nights, where they came out and we went with the animals, and I just basically tried to train them on the, just the general pieces of what they needed to be worried about when it comes to interacting with the kids, what are the standards, you know, how do we interact with the animals, what are your roles and responsibilities going to be, and kind of going through that with them. So the dates and attendees, so this year, we have eight camps planned, five-day camps. And again, just like last year, we're allowing kids to sign up for just one or two, it's individual days as well, because of the popularity there. And so I have the dates listed there. Obviously, you can see, we've had our first camp, week of the twenty-seventh of June. We had eleven campers that week. So registrations are going a little slow, but they're starting to hemp up a little bit as we're starting to get more interest and people are starting to come back to camp. But again, we've got keepers returning multiple weeks again, as you keyed in on there. We've got two campers that are coming for four of our eight weeks again this summer, and they just love it. So just a little humor. One of them, one of the moms told me the other day, she goes, you know, he told me, I went home from, from camp the other day, that he loves farm camp as much as he loves me. And I said, I don't know how you want to take that, but it makes me feel good, because I know he loves you a lot. Okay, yeah. All right, so as far as staff, so we have, I've hired thirty-three staff members, and these are the breakdowns. You see the adult camp leader, so there is an adult in charge of each of any group that we have. So right now, so far, we've only had enough campers to have one group. So we got one, besides me, you have one adult who is the camp leader with that, with that group. I've hired three of those, again, plus me, in case I'm needed, to run that group, as well as their, their staff, the staff in each group is one camp leader, eighteen-year-over, an assistant camp leader who's fifteen to seventeen years old, and then two to three, generally three, junior counselors who are the twelve to fourteen-years-olds. So that camp leader has, you know, five staff, and I guess four in addition to them, as well as up to, in this case, eleven campers. So we got three of those, assistant camp leaders, we got eight on staff, and in the junior counselors, we got twenty-two. Now, these kids, these adults are not working every week this summer. They're, I've built a schedule, and I work, it's a dynamic schedule based on how many kids sign up, that they'll work two to three weeks of the summer. And so they, that way, they all get a little bit of experience in, in doing it, and I have people that I can draw on when we need to, you know, need a sub, we need to pull people in. So basically, if you look at the staff and the group, in one group, we're allowing groups up to eleven, just because of the way the numbers work out and what our experience was last year. We can handle that without any big problem, and then you have five staff members with those eleven. I also am around constantly, and I usually have one or two other junior counselors I bring just to be my assistance, making sure everything's set up, everything's operating efficiently, and we don't have any, you know, issues with anybody.
But at every camp session, you have an adult camp leader, an assistant camp leader, and then some junior camp counselors?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, do you hire any of the neighbors or family members that work with you?
Last year, it was almost strictly my family members. It was my, my two kids who still lived at home, and, and some of their friends who I knew and I knew I could trust. This year, my kids decided they didn't want to do it, so I had to go outside the family. So I don't have, but I do have some cousins that I hired, and they came up last week, and it was, it worked out really well. But most of the staff, I don't have any neighbors that have kids that would work in there, and, and the adults, they've got their own lives, you know, they got real jobs. So, so no, I don't, none of my neighbors or anything are involved. But, you know, most, again, most of the people who are working are from Lakeville, Elko, and probably Hastings areas that are all fairly local there.
Mr. Chairman, just one thing, are you the oldest staff person?
Yes.
Are there any other staff people, you said plus eighteen, that are closer to your age than they are to eighteen?
Yes, of the three, there is one who, I think she's, she's a friend of ours, I think she's in her mid-thirties. The other two are nineteen or twenty. And so for those two, they've been my camp leaders last week and this week, and I am mentoring them personally. So I'm right next to, since we only have one group, it's really easy. So I'm giving them the reins to lead things, but I'm walking through the process with them. I'm watching what they're doing. And then at the end of the week, or as, as needed throughout the week, but at the end of the week, I sit them all down and I give them, you know, like you would with your boss, I give them performance feedback on how I think they did and what they need to do the next time they come. So that was a concern of mine. I'm like, okay, I only got three, and two of them are twenty or younger. But I know them both, and I know their backgrounds, and so I've, but I've taken it upon myself to make sure that I'm, stay with them and mentor them the first couple of times they come.
Inquiring minds want to know, do you carry liability insurance for your camp?
Yes, we do. Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Board?
That was it.
Mr. Robbins?
Chair, just one, you mentioned in the first couple of sentences tonight that it was a success, but not financially.
Right.
A difficulty financially, what, what, without going into anything of, are you not getting enough people paying, or is it?
Yeah, it's, it's primarily that. It's that, you know, last year, like I said, we only had, you know, at most, we had maybe fourteen campers. And we had a lot of, you know, being the first year, we had a lot of supplies and a lot of stuff to be able to operate the camp. So our expenses were, you know, probably, well, we, I think ultimately only lost maybe a thousand dollars, you know, overall, which was actually, I thought was actually pretty good.
What's your break-even in campers? What do you need to break even or, or be above water? Thirty?
We probably, well, yeah, I don't think we need thirty a week. I think if we got, I'm trying to remember, I actually did that. I think it was like if we got fifteen to twenty, at least half the weeks. So if we got a total of, say, a hundred and fifty, I think is what it was, if we got a total of a hundred and fifty campers all this summer, we would be able to break even with our expenses that were planned for this year.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Robbins?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a, a couple of comments. I remember our public hearing when you brought this concept to the board, and after visiting your location, I had some modest concerns regarding if it would be able to be successful. One of the reasons I thought it would be a problem, it's not easy to find. But obviously, you made some inroads. I would guess that you're moving in a planned manner that looks like it's got a business plan that can work. You got to get some, your head count got to come up a bit, but
Yeah.
I think the endeavor of it itself is worthy of its, of its name and worthy for the interim use permit to be reviewed again.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one last thing, what exactly is the program there? I mean, a lot of these are six- and seven-year-olds. Are they introduced to animals? Is a lot of it their inter, interaction with
That's a great question. I, I didn't put any of this in here. But yeah, our curriculum, I put you because it's somewhat informal, there's absolutely inner animal interactions. We have goats, chickens, turkeys, ducks. We added a miniature donkey this year. And so we have specific days that we learn about, you know, facts about those different animals, and then we go interact with them, we go play with them, you know, pet them, brush them, you know, learn about what they do, what they eat, how old do they get, stuff like that, just in, you know, general knowledge about those types of animals. And then we also have discovery type activities. We, we do archery, we do scavenging hunts, and obstacle courses, and, you know, water games, you know, when the heat is like this, you know, we, we try to incorporate water as, as much as we can. And then we got a lot of other types of games and activities where we just try to challenge the kids to do something that kind of push them out of, out of their, their comfort zones. And I'll tell you, just, that's been the most rewarding to me, is to see when a kid hesitates at something or, or acknowledges a little bit of discomfort or fear, and then a counselor comes alongside him or another camper comes alongside him, and they conquer it, and it's just, it's inspiring. And so those are the types of things, you know, we're trying to challenge kids, teach kids, and give them opportunities just to learn about the outdoors. You know, there's so much this all the time. Out at Discovery Days, their heads got to be up, or looking for something on the ground, right? There's, they're, they're interacting with one another, and like, I see these kids outside of camp, you know, and I'm like, they're almost like completely different kids, like I almost can't talk to them because of, you mean, old, leave me alone, old man. I'm texting my friends, but at camps, everybody's community, and it's, it's really neat to see.
Hey, just one more thing, you're in Newmarket, right?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a new app out there called Nextdoor.
Yep.
And it's a neighborhood app, and it's unbelievable. We were taking in hay on my farm, and I put up a Nextdoor thing and said, need young men age, or young, young people age blank to blank to, I practically had to move, so many people were following me. So maybe you should advertise on there, they get tremendous response.
I did, I did once, but I should do it again.
Yeah.
I did it early in the spring. I, it is, you're right, I should do it again.
Do they bring their own lunch?
Yes, they bring lunch. We might give them some watermelon or something during swim time in the afternoon. But yeah, they bring their own lunches and snacks. I provide all the water they can drink.
And then you refrigerate that for them, and?
Yes, yep, absolutely, yep.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
Very important, you know, it's really is good to hear back on, on the, on the interim use permit. This is something that we haven't really faced before in, on this level, so it's interesting to hear how it's going and how well it's working, so thank you very much for your report.
Thanks.
Mr. Hall, did you want to add anything to that, or at this point? Oh, you're done? Okay, very good. Well, I think that completes our, our items. The next item we have is our, this is a public hearing. Did anyone want to make a comment on this? I should
It wasn't a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing?
No. This was not a public hearing.
It's a report.
It was a report.
Okay, well, then I'll, I'll be going directly to the manager report.
Davis? Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a lot of items that went to the Board since our last meeting, since we did not meet in June, so I'll go way back to May. On May seventeenth, the Board did approve the interim use permit for Alex Hernandez to operate a home extended business. That was in section seventeen of Sand Creek Township. On June seventh, the Board adopted the preliminary plat of amazed acres that created thirty-seven lots down in section twenty-one of Spring Lake Township. They also approved a conditional use permit amendment and transfer of that CUP for dog training and boarding kennel in Cedar Lake Township. They approved some of the changes to the uses table that, um, you looked at back this spring that allowed some additional accessory uses for properties in the rural business reserve, rural industrial and the heavy industrial zoning districts. They approved the CUP amendment for, um, the Jensen's, Mark and Jennifer cooperate, uh, the, uh, the farm market, including a farm stay, if you recall that one. That was in section twenty three of Sand Creek Township. They approved the interim use permit for accessory dwelling unit for a family member in Sand Creek Township, a lot of Sand Creek Township items. Um, on June twenty first, the board approved the preliminary final plot of Vergis Estates that created seven lots in Spring Lake Township. And finally, they approved the conditional use permit amendment um, for the Doucette family, uh, to allow additional indoor storage and outdoor storage in Louisville Township. So that's all the items that went to board. Um, you probably noticed next to me is Barb. Barb agreed to come back temporarily to help in this position. Kim Cave, who, uh, was in this position for a couple of months, announced that she was leaving the county for employment at Canterbury. And we'll miss Kim. And Barb was nice enough to come back and help us during this interim. We do have the position posted, um, administrative assistant position. And I think the posting is out for another week to ten days.
Just don't let her leave again.
Well. So we hope to have someone hired, um, in a month or or around then and get that person in here to become the zoning deputy clerk. Um, I think that's it. That's all I have for updates. We have a fairly short agenda for August. And, um, staff and I are talking about maybe, uh, bringing a workshop onto the agenda and revisit some topics that we've talked about in the past. And so we'll, we'll determine if August makes sense for that or not. Um, that's it for an update.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Robbins? I know this is difficult, Brad, but have you thought about a tour at all?
We have thought about a tour and thanks for the reminder, um, Commissioner Robbins. We have, and you know, maybe this is a good time. Is there certain projects that have occurred in the last six months to a year or longer that you would really like to do a field trip and take a look at it?
The business park in New Market.
Yep.
Yeah, I just was there today and and it's worth taking a look at it and that's, that's a development that until you see the elevation and you see how it is now, you you wouldn't have expected. And that's a really good thing that you need to visually see it on the ground. And and there's no roads in there before, so you couldn't drive back there. Now you can drive back there and see it. So it's it's interesting to bring that up because that's one that, that, I agree with you to see that. That's one right off the bat, as we're seeing.
I know, I don't know how hard it is, but I wouldn't mind taking a look at at just the farm tonight, uh, from that camp.
Yeah, it's close.
Um, just to see what it's like.
Down the road.
Yeah.
Another, um, another site that a lot of commissioners might remember is the YMCA camp.
Yep.
Yeah. That's up and running and that might be interesting.
That'd be a really good one to see.
I had the opportunity to go out and have a tour um, with the director of the camp and I told some folks here that, I mean, it's very impressive. So, yeah, we can get out there, lay an eyeball on that one. That's really.
It's really helpful to see things. And and I was thinking about that today when you were talking about to actually go out and see them, what it looks like, because we see things conceptually here. And we see aerial photographs and we see topographical maps, but to see them and then you get to see the difference. And and so I think that's worthwhile. I I think it's worthwhile.
On the YMCA at all?
What's that?
Have you heard any feedback on it?
I guess, Greg, have you heard any feedback on the YMCA?
Um, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Huber, um, not, generally no. Um, as Commissioner Watson did, Marty and myself and a couple of staff. When were we out there? Was it last summer? I think it was last summer. So we got a little bit of a tour as the buildings and everything were under construction. Um, we did get an email in either late May or early June, and it was a couple of the neighbors who live on the road entering in there. It was a chain of emails, uh, sent to the township and there were a couple initial complaints and mainly it was some of the counselors driving too fast on the road, looking at their phones, not pay attention to where they're going. Um, just some general questions about some neighborhood. So we forwarded those to the YMCA folks. Um, and that had to be thirty, forty days ago and we haven't heard anything since. Um, so we believe they were being good neighbors and and.
We did build in restrictions on travel inbound and outbound on certain, on that back road going into the camp, for the camp personnel.
Yeah, we we haven't.
Limits there, how much traffic can go in and out?
We haven't heard anything negative, um, because assuming like the Gretz camp, um, that they've been open for a good month now and we haven't heard anything reported since they've been open with buses or anything. So we're assuming things are going smoothly, so.
What I, what I remember in that meeting is a lot of the neighbors, not up and down the road, but off to the side and that were worried about it, but I bet you that's gone away.
Yeah, like I said, we we have not received any reports of anything as far as traffic or buses or, you know, anything like that. So, uh, we we assume they they opened right after, you know, school closed, so they've probably been open a couple of weeks and nothing's been reported.
And lighting wasn't an issue either.
The, one of the emails was about lighting. Um, we didn't get a clear um, sense of what the issue was. It was a neighbor saying that the lights were on, but they didn't say how long they were on. But we reported that to the Y and they, um, said that their lights are on a timer to go off at ten o'clock. Now, there might be some security lights on the building. Um, but, yeah, they said most of the lights that would be shining would go off at ten o'clock, so.
You could shoot skeet back there, you're not gonna hear them. I mean, there's trees everywhere.
We'll start formulating a a tour with some of these spots and maybe staff will think of a few others. And we'll try to pick a time, whether it's late summer or right after Labor Day that might work, depending on these stops. It might be hard to stop at the Y during the the day until campus time, but definitely we'll get some more thinking on that tour, Commissioner Robbins, and put something together. I like the idea.
I love tours.
Did we ever hear anything about the paintball one off of twenty seven in New Market Township? You remember that one, Marty, Marty? Anything about the paintball?
We don't get any complaints about it.
It's pretty far back.
It is way back.
Neither, I'm the one in Jordan either.
Oh, yeah, that's another one you can't see.
Where is that, Bob? It's off of twenty seven. It's pretty far back.
Behind me.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they've been there forever. It's Dick Ames's nephew that runs it, if I'm correct.
Yep.
Yeah. And I had one time I had to call over there and they didn't do anything, so I just called the sheriff and the sheriff came up to my house and I, he said, I complained about the noise, they were having something. And he came up to the house and he said, what did you complain about? You couldn't hear anything. It was so loud. They drove over there and with one minute it was ratcheted down. And so that's the only time in all those years there was ever anything.
Don't they ring some kind of a bell or alarm or something when everything is shut down?
Never heard it. Never heard it. The only time was, was that it was, they were having like a dance or something and it was rock music and it was really loud, I mean, unbelievably loud. They they are literally right behind me. They've been really good neighbors. And I went over there and talked to the Ames kid after that and said, um, look, I was taking horses down the hill when that music went off. It was interesting there for about five minutes. But, um, what he did is he told me we rarely have a band, we rarely play live music and it's been years. They call me if they're gonna have one and I just leave the horses in. They've been really good neighbors.
Okay.
So we're working on setting up, uh, sites and tour and I think it's a good idea. I really do think it's helpful for to visualize what happens and the and the impact of this is as we go on, especially the highly controversial, um, things when we fill up the the rooms, conserve people, and then we actually see what the actual impact is and what that looks like. I think it helps to make good decisions, so.
Are the neighbors still real crazy about the New Market Business Park or they ramped down?
Um, I think it's ramped down. I think they're keeping an eye on it and particularly the landscaping.
Business park.
I think we've heard a couple of comments questioning the landscaping and timing of landscaping and I think Marty's been following up on that. But overall, it's been quiet since.
Good.
Okay, anything else? Well, if we don't have anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Repeat the second by Commissioner Andrews. All in favor of our eye? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.